So, you know, that, so that, that's why if you're, if, if it sounds familiar, it's because we have had this similar discussion several years ago.
Quick question. Insofar as parking at the high school is not exactly over abundant, why are we even considering a plan that would involve utilizing any panels in the parking lot? There seems to be plenty of roof space at Danbury High School, the building's massive. Is there a specific reason why we're considering that?
This is Aaron with Johnson Controls. So, so we looked at the building load profile and to maximize the benefit back to the city and the schools, you want to try to get after as much of that load and reduce your overall cost to electricity as possible. And so that couldn't be done by the roofs alone. And so we put on the master planning to take a look at the carports. Certainly, if the final design is eliminating too many, that will be readjusted and certainly can be removed. It's not anything set in stone at this point.
Excellent, thank you. Quick question, is the front bank or the hill in front of the building which faces east, not really southeast, but east, east, has that front bank been considered for location of, of, or is that not appropriate?
We hadn't considered any ground mount on the site. We just know that the, yeah.
Just so you know, this initial part is all, there, there's going to be a study and analysis and, and it may come down to some additional adjustments that need to occur. But it, you know, to, right now, it's, it's conceptual. They've identified, you know, these sites as strong possibilities, but they, they haven't gone through the design, had these kind of discussions in depth with Antonio and his crew. And that still needs to happen. And that's why we've, you know, we proposed hiring these guys to, you know, to do that, because it's all required as part of the application package. So I, I hope that clarifies it a little bit.
Amy?
Thank you.
Question about the panel that's going to be in the parking lot. Aren't we talking about King Street or was we also talking about Danbury High for that?
Just high school.
Oh, just the high school, I thought it was King Street, okay, so.
Yeah. Well, for the parking lot, the carport is just the high school.
And, and Amy, for clarification, just in case I clouded this, it's, it's our high school that will receive the solar panels. All three middle schools in King Street Primary as well will also receive the panels. But in addition to a panel on a roof at the high school, there will also be one in the parking lot as situated as a carport.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yeah, sorry about that, Kevin. I should have walked everyone through that at my initial overview.
Dave, just save us the money, don't worry about it.
Any other questions from board members? What's the next step, Mr. Watson?
So, Aaron, I don't want to be premature. Do, do you have any additional highlights you'd like to share outside of what Dave has already shared?
So, this is Aaron, I just dropped Kevin. If that was a question for me, I only caught the end additional insight to share.
Right, so Chairperson Cooper was asking what our next steps were. And be, before I ask for the board to move forward with the motion, just wondering if you had any additional items you'd like to add before we move forward?
No, I, I, I just would like to, to emphasize what, what a good opportunity that this is presented with, with what was shared from us in terms of the conditions of these specific roofs, the fact that you'll be able to pay for a project that takes your electricity into account 90% of that production and in year nine will fall to a, a, an increase or savings back to the school district without doing anything else. You're leveraging two, two subsidies. One is the state of Connecticut's grant process and the ZREC, which we have been successful in everything except for the high school. Once we do get to high school, whether it be in this round or in the, that pro forma or payback will change significantly since the, the solar at the high school is the largest array that we're, we're looking at right now. So I think, you know, everybody needs to understand that the ad hoc committee is recommending that the city approves two documents. We're asking that the Board of Ed approves an additional document for site spec so that we can try to get in the application to get grant award letters in August here by the 10th. And then we'll move into the final design and work hand and glove with the facility staff, making sure that they're comfortable with the final layouts. They go through local permitting, then they go up to the state for a very thorough review. And so this is the initial stage, you know, that we're asking for commitment from the Board of Ed as well as the city so that we can get into a final design and be able to present the final project here.
Aaron, thank you. So, Ms. Cooper, this will conclude our presentation. I, before I totally hand it over, I'd just like to say, one, the, the presentation a couple of weeks ago with the, with the committee that recommended the project, not only to the Board of Ed, but also to the city, they reiterated this opportunity for, you know, this potential savings of $700,000 a year. You know, certainly it's not, it's not monies that we would see immediately, but as we get closer to the end of the leasing term, you know, $700,000 that potentially could be reinvested back into our kids and back into our school system. And so that, obviously, that was really good to hear. But I, I think what's even more important is this investment would be funded through grants. Certainly would require work from the district to get these grants submitted and then also from the city side as well as part of this partnership. But, you know, we, it, it sounds like a great opportunity for us. And last but not least, Antonio and Dave and Johnson Controls doesn't realize it yet, but, you know, it's also an opportunity for us with this green project to educate our kids in our community. So we have a director, chief of academic instruction and supervision who's, who's looking forward to learning more about this project so we can find ways to educate our own kids about, you know, the, these kinds of savings and what solar energy is all about. And so it's, you know, I know we had, we, we have a similar project in the district years ago, but this one will be happening right in the middle of our, when we're ready to launch our academy in a couple of years. And it's a great opportunity to educate our staff and our kids and our entire community about solar and, and just kind of, you know, going green and continue to save money. So I think it's a great opportunity for all of us. I'm looking forward to, hoping this board will approve the motion this evening, the same with the city, and, and begin to realize these savings and this education opportunity for all of us.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. We have motions. We're going to start with four A, I think there's five motion and we're going to do them separately. So, we're going to start with four A, did I get a motion on four A?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approve the education specifications for solar panel installation at Broadview Middle School.
Second.
Caution, Kate, is a motion made by Kate, second by Joe. Are there any questions concerning action item four A? Kate, can you do the roll call?
Joe Britton?
Aye.
Rachel Chaleski?
Aye.
Kate Canetta?
Aye.
Gladys Cooper?
Aye.
Joe De Silva?
Aye.
Catherine Hodgson?
Aye.
Rich Jannelli?
Aye.
Kathy Molinaro?
Aye.
Al Russo?
Aye.
Amy Spolino?
Aye.
Thank you, motion so care. Kathy Molinaro, could you do item four B?
I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the education specifications for solar panel installation at Danbury High School.
Second.
Motion made by Kathy, who second?
Joe Britton.
Okay, second by Joe. Any questions, this, this question concerning action item would be. Saying, Kate, could you do the roll call?
Joe Britton?
Yay.
Rachel Chaleski?
Aye.
Kate Canetta?
Aye.
Gladys Cooper?
Aye.
Joe De Silva?
Aye.
Catherine Hodgson?
Aye.
Rich Jannelli?
Aye.
Kathy Molinaro?
Aye.
Al Russo?
Aye.
Amy Spolino?
Aye.
Motion so care. Would you could you do act item four C please?
Did you say Rachel?
Yes, Rachel Watson.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approve the education specifications for solar, solar panel installation at King Street Primary School.
Second.
Motion made by Rachel, second by?
Al?
Yeah.
Al, okay. Any questions? Saying, Kate, could you do the roll call?
Joe Britton?
Yes.
Rachel Chaleski?
Aye.
Kate Canetta?
Aye.
Gladys Cooper?
Aye.
Joe De Silva?
Aye.
Catherine Hodgson?
Aye.
Rich Jannelli?
Aye.
Kathy Molinaro?
Aye.
Al Russo?
Yes.
Amy Spolino?
Aye.
Motion so care, thank you. Joe Britton, could you do act item four D? This is the second one from the bottom, Joe.
He's on mute.
Ah, yeah, sorry, I'm just, I was trying to get my background muted. It's a little noisy in the house right now, but, okay. So I would like to make a motion that the Board of Education approve the education specifications for solar panel installation at Rogers Park Middle School.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Joe Britton, second by?
Amy.
Amy. Any questions? Saying, Kate, do the roll call?
Joe Britton?
Aye.
Rachel Chaleski?
Aye.
Kate Canetta?
Aye.
Gladys Cooper?
Aye.
Joe De Silva?
Aye.
Catherine Hodgson?
Aye.
Rich Jannelli?
Aye.
Kathy Molinaro?
Aye.
Al Russo?
Aye.
Amy Spolino?
Aye.
Motion so care. Amy, would you do action item four E? This is the last motion.
Okay, I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the education specification for solar panel installation at West Side Middle School.
I'll second.
Motion made by Amy, second by Kate. Any discussion, questions saying, Kate, do the roll call?
Joe Britton?
Aye.
Rachel Chaleski?
Aye.
Kate Canetta?
Aye.
Gladys Cooper?
Aye.
Joe De Silva?
Aye.
Catherine Hodgson?
Aye.
Rich Jannelli?
Aye.
Kathy Molinaro?
Aye.
Al Russo?
Aye.
Amy Spolino?
Aye.
Okay, motion so care. Thank you so very much. And before we move on to attend, I certainly would like to thank Mr. St. Clair and everyone from the city. I don't want to start calling names of someone I forget. Just thank you for rearranging your schedule to accommodate us tonight and bring this information to the board. I know that you, the guys have a busy schedule tomorrow night and just thank you for changing your schedule to meet with us tonight. Thank you on behalf of the board.
Excuse me, Gladys?
Mr. Watson?
Excuse me, Gladys? Excuse me, Board Chair Cooper, where, I am having some difficulty hearing you. You are going in and out a little bit on your audio. I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, did everyone get my thank you to the city for rearranging their schedule for coming this night?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Karen, I'm sorry. Now we're back to Mr. Watson, going to do the update on our reopening of schools.
Yeah. Just, I'm going to say goodnight and congratulations on, on making the correct decision for the, the city and for the children. Have a good night.
Good night.
You, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, everyone.
I'm going to sign off too, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Dave, thanks for joining us, I really appreciate it. Antonio, thank you, absolutely, like tomorrow.
Thank you.
Talk to you soon.
Madam Chair, somebody sent me a text, is there, is the YouTube livestream available for this meeting? Or, because there's some, somebody made a comment that they didn't think it was live.
I, I, I can answer that question, Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
So, so we're, we're not sure what is wrong, but we are taping this evening's board meeting now. We will make it available as soon as possible after the meeting. For some reason, we, we are not able to connect live on the YouTube channel, Joe.
Thank you.
Yeah. I've been going back and forth in the background trying to find out, trying to resolve this and.
It's just, I just want to make sure we knew, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So, and I'm sure the people who are looking to join would like to hear kind of what the updates are regarding the reopening. And so I'm sorry they're not here live, but we'll make sure they have this available for them immediately. So, so one, I have a PowerPoint because I would like to remind the board some of the discussions we had in May prior to the end of the school year. And I think that'd provide the context that you might need to understand the, the many moves that have gone on this summer to try to prepare us for the reopening. I also know some of the questions that might be out there are certainly related to any latest updates from the CDC and the State Health Department. So we'll certainly be, certainly have an opportunity to talk about those updates as well, what that means for our timeline regarding a reopening plan on August 25th, which I'll speak to later on in the presentation. Give me one second and I'm going to upload the PowerPoint. Okay, so the board might recall last year in May, as part of our effort to make sure that we can fully open all, you know, fully open in the fall, there were some things we needed to do if we were going to follow the, or at least at the, to the best of our ability, follow the CDC guidelines for three foot distancing. You might recall some of the plans called for us to create the lease at the, the site in Brookfield, which we have since called Danbury Primary Center. It required construction in some of our buildings to ensure that we can adhere to the, to the social distancing guidelines. And it also called for additional teachers district wide, 15, 15 at the high school and 14 at our elementary schools. So, in, in addition to those investments for staffing personnel, personnel investments, it also called for us to purchase over a half a million dollars in furniture. And not to mention, and you might also recall, we had talked about tents specifically for the high school and potentially at that time for the middle school to spread our kids out for feeding. So I'm just going to review in the, in the next couple of slides, some of those plans and then kind of what's been happening over the summer. So one, as, as going into the meeting in May, we reviewed space capacity at every school and every classroom in the district. We reevaluated space capacity, you know, given the CDC recommended three foot social distancing guidelines as part of our budget presentation, particularly leveraging S2 and S3 funds in, in an effort to reopen all of our schools safely, specifically to those 28 teachers we have talked about adding to the budget. This was all part of this opportunity to reopen our schools and bring all of our kids back. And certainly we assessed the financial impact, academic impact for bringing our students back in fall. And, and, you know, certainly I, I recall some of the questions in May about, you know, well, what, what if the guidelines were relaxed or what if the guidelines had went away? What would this mean? And, you know, one of the things I recall in, in, in response was, you know, certainly we have an opportunity to lower class size district wide. And so as we're trying to address and mitigate learning loss and accelerate learning, I, I would like to think that having lower class size across the system is certainly going to help us. And so let me just go to the next slide. And then here, here into some of the problems that we had outlined for you in May. One, space was a concern throughout the district. This is not new to the board and certainly not new to the community. But then social distancing guidelines, you know, further limited our classroom capacity. So 612 schools did not have the space to house students in their cafeterias. K5 schools did not have enough teaching sections to accommodate enrollment plus the social distancing guidelines. And some of the, some of the solutions that we had landed on is that the district will add additional staff and that, you know, hence the 28 teachers district wide, new teachers to the budget. We, we would invest in furniture that would also allow for our students to be socially distanced. The board and the community may not be aware, but a lot of our classrooms, particularly at the K5 level, a lot of our classrooms had tables actually to promote group work and cooperative learning. And then, of course, during social distancing, we want to try to keep our students apart. And so that required a significant investment in furniture. And in the next slide, you'll see the initial projections for the furniture, furniture purchases. But we had also talked about not just furniture, but also tents, particularly for the high school and, and the leasing of tents at the high school to make sure when the kids went to lunch, we can safely have kids sit down to eat. And so that, that lease was, was, was approximately 70, 80,000 a month. And I guess in a subsequent slide, we will look at that. But not, in addition to maintaining our existing lease at Sacred Heart, early in the stages in, you know, last April and May, we had looked at the school St. Joseph's in Brookfield, Connecticut, which again has since been renamed Danbury Primary School. Then some of the activities that we had wanted to, the, the board to consider is staffing, leasing of facility upgrades. We would commit, certainly commit, we had already committed to reopening the schools, but we had stated that it would require additional staffing, furniture and a lease agreement. And so at that time, we had recommended that three of our kindergarten, three schools, we would actually remove all the sections from three of our schools to free up more space. South Street, South Street School was one of the schools that was targeted. Stanley Rough was an additional school and last but not least, Ellsworth. All of those kindergarten sections, that's in a total of 11, would be reassigned to the Brookfield site, freeing up additional space in those buildings, whether it was their respective cafeterias or just the overall growth, which in fact Stanley Rough is actually gaining two sections as it was losing the four kindergarten sections to the Brookfield site. Then Danbury High School, and you know, this was another big investment for us as a, as a district and a community, they, they switched from a seven period day to an eight period day, which added more options for kids to choose from, from classes, but it also reduced class size. And so it, it's, it's also, you know, a great opportunity to provide more offerings for kids. So certainly we'll address graduation requirements. We felt like at that time, this was the best option and the best option moving forward. And so I'll just go to the, and the impact is just kind of reiterating everything that I talked about. And then I'll just go to the next slide, you might recall this slide. And so implemented the eight period schedule plus the 22 teachers. And, and these were, this is in addition to some special ed staff, ESL teachers, PPS staff to help support specifically the growth at Brookfield, et cetera. This was an estimated with classroom supplies for all those new additional classrooms. This was at an estimated cost of $3 million. And then our lease, our leasing agreement plus, plus the leasing agreements, projections for the tents and the desk for really K12 throughout the system. We had made, we had made a projection, anticipated numbers of 1.6, 1.6 million dollars just between leasing and furniture alone. And Mr. Jobber is going to speak to some of those, some of those, some, some of that progress that we made this summer. And then last but not least, we had discussed, we would need at least five additional buses just for enrollment growth alone. But then we would need an additional five buses for the Brookfield expansion so that our kids are not experiencing, you know, more than a 20 to 25 minutes projected ride that STA had given us. But this was all at a cost that had projected $720,000. Since we had, Dr. Ann Mead and I, we had meetings with our kindergarten families along with some of our principals from the three sending schools. Since, since the summer has started and after meeting with these families, there was a request and quite frankly, the families were correct. Although the board and, the board has not had monitors on buses, I don't believe, in a long time. There was a request to have bus, to have bus monitors specifically for all kindergarten students on our buses. And so we have looked into a, looked into a contract with, with the bus company to see what it would mean to add monitors for the bus. And that cost would be at about 350 to 400,000 additional dollars for us to pull off. So I did also want to make the board aware of that number as well. But these were our initial, initial projections here. We are looking at a potential savings in our furniture. So we do feel like it will not be an additional cost to our overall bottom line. And let me just go to the next slide. And this is where we are now in terms of our update. Kathy, I have you here for reopening guidance from the CDC and State Health Department. I'm going to ask that you and Kara Ponte go last. But I will, I have, I have asked from our, from our cabinet, extended cabinet, I have asked Kelly, Rich Jobber, Kathy O'Dowd to join us this evening. Kelly Trushus to join us this evening to provide some updates on behalf of our preparation for reopening in the fall. And then I've also asked Kathy O'Dowd to provide some clarifications or just some, some information for the, for the entire community regarding the reopening guidance from the CDC and the State Health Department. The state recently released some interim guidance regarding the reopening. That was on last Monday. And then on Wednesday, the CDC released new guidance regarding the reopening of schools. And so, you know, this, this information continues to be fluid and continues to change day from day. It seems like almost hour to hour. In, in the next slide, I will share with you, you know, some of our collective next steps. We will be asking Ann Mead, and she's going to speak later on. But we will be asking, we will be conducting a town hall meeting. I know the community is going to have many questions regarding the, regarding the reopening. Certainly happy to, to, to facilitate, facilitate that process. And so Ann is looking at scheduling two days the week of, of eight night next week. And then our reopening committee, which is a big group of 30 plus people, we are, we have a hold on our respective calendars for two days, the week of the 16th. And this is all in preparation for our meeting on 8/25 in which we will be asking the board to approve the reopening, the new, the newly revised reopening plan for 8/25. So I'll just go back to this slide and I will start off with hiring and staffing update for the board and for the community. We have this school year like, like no weather. I mean, these last 12 to 18 months certainly have been like no weather. But our HR department has been very busy. Our LMHC principals, our 612 principals and supervisors have been very busy because we've had to hire 120 certified staff members this summer. And so the onboarding process has been, has kept us all very busy across the board. But I'm, but I'm very happy to report here on the second day of August, we've, we've hired 120 people essentially in, in, in a month and a half. I mean, I just want to say, just applaud the staff for their hard work in making this happen. In addition to the 120 certified staff, we brought on two of those, two of those staff members are two principals. And so we have Principal Polino at Hayestown, who'd replace Stephanie Furman, who was here with us for, for six or seven years. And then we have a new interim principal at, at the Danbury Primary Center, and that's Janet Sage. And we're really excited about her arrival and her, you know, the, the great year we know she's going to have over at that school. And then last but not least, we have 18 non-certified staff members who we've also hired and it's still more to come. And so this, this season is certainly busy for us in, in this, for personnel and getting ready to reopen our buildings. But we are, as you can hear, we have been busy and we're definitely going to make it happen. And so our, our next area is family and community engagement. We're certainly. We're certainly committed to, you know, leveraging these grant monies to make sure our families continue to remain connected and find ways to provide two-way communications for all of our families. And Dr. Anne Mead has an update for us in that area.
Thank you, Mr. Walston. Good evening, everyone. I'm happy to be here tonight to give you an update. First, I'd like to just address the extended learning program for our students that are going to Brookfields, the primary center there. We felt it was very necessary. And we were sensitive to parent need that often trying to get to Brookfield for our families that didn't drive, but needed the before and after school care would be a problem for them. So students will go to their home school. We, they will then can start ELP at seven in the morning. A bus will pick them up, take them to the primary center. And then if they've enrolled in the afternoon, they'll be able to come back off that same bus to the ELP program in the afternoon to six o'clock. So that was a way to accommodate our families and make it easier for them to still keep with their consistent schedules and provide a safe place for their children in the afternoon. Secondly, we are in the process of hiring family liaisons for every school. I'm putting forth 10 candidates tomorrow that will be placed at different schools. Think back to several years ago, I believe I talked to the board about how we had some very part-time folks, 10 hours a month in our schools. And I'm happy to report that two of those people have stepped up and said, we'd like to be full-time in our schools. And so the principals are, are loving that because for consistency, knowing their parents, it's, it's very beneficial for everyone. We are still looking for folks. The people that we are putting forward are all bilingual. And so that will help with our families feeling more comfortable and feeling that they can go to the school and someone speaks their language and we'll be able to get them the resources and the help that they need, as well as to connect them to the teachers. And so two things that we're doing to help families connect to our schools more. One is a national project that's called Bridge Visits. And normally in a non-COVID year, you would do a home visiting project where kindergarten teachers would go out to incoming students' homes and do a home visit. Well, with COVID, we, the national project actually moved to Bridge Visits. And so using some of our S R money, I'm proud to say we have 82% of our kindergarten teachers that have agreed to do these hour, about 30 minute to 45 minute call pre-planned with their parents. And during this, this call, they ask one question, what are your hopes and dreams for your child? And so we're hoping that these initial calls will help create that bridge, thus the name bridge, to have parents feel very welcomed into our schools, get to know their kindergarten teachers ahead of time and start that dialogue that builds that trust and relationship with our families. Second on that, we are implementing Parent Square. I call it PS2. So no one confuses it with our Power School System. But it is a bidirectional tool that we will use, that we're, that will replace the school robo-call. The nice thing about this is once students are put into classes and teachers have reached out to parents, the parents can actually initiate conversations with their teacher. There are parameters around that. It won't be, you know, texting your teacher at midnight and asking for a response by 1:00 AM in the morning. The teachers have certain things that they can do. Principals, we have started to train them already before they left for the summer break. We'll do more training with them as well as teachers when they return. And then we'll have several seminars for our parents as well to learn how to use this and the family liaisons will use it. The last good thing about that is, you know, you get all these robo-calls during the day. So imagine having a child in four different schools and a potential of four to six different robo-calls. Families will still get emergency alerts, school closing, delayed openings, whatever. But they can opt into what's called a Danbury Digest or the Danbury Digest. And at the end of the day, at six o'clock, delivered to their device of choice, will come an email or a text message with all of those different robo-calls from the different schools. But then at their leisure, after their kids go to bed, they can really sit down and pay attention to them. What we've noticed with our robo-messenger is there are a lot of parents that just hear the robo and just shut it down. And so they never get the messages. So we hope that this will be an expanded way to have better dialogue with our parents so that they're really understanding what's going on in the school and providing them a way to speak to their teachers.
And, and what if, what if English is not my native, my native language? Any, any options for me in Paris?
105, 125 different languages you can choose from. So the teacher writes it or the principal writes it in English. And then it gets translated internally through Parent Square and is delivered to the parent's box or wrote or, or, you know, whatever, email, text, however they choose to get their messages in the language that they've chosen ahead of time. So where the school messenger had two or three options, this has many more options. And then lastly, as Mr. Walston said, on next week, on Wednesday, the 11th in English and on the 12th in Spanish, we will have a reopening forum, community listening forum for reopening. And I will make sure that we get out flyers, they're just about done, to all of our families and to board members too, and anyone else that would like to come forth and listen to what our families think about our reopening. So I think that's all. We, you know, as you know, 49 Osborne Street is closed. We have moved into 17 Cottage Street and families are, are receiving that well and coming out for essential registration there and signing up for ELP and coming to get their needs met. So families have made that transition well to our new, our new home, temporary home. So that's it.
And thank you for the update.
You're very welcome.
Ms. Kelly Truce, are you ready?
I'm ready. Good evening, everyone. Just a few things from the Special Education Department, just to update you on. We are finalizing our final week. We had ran a five-week special education summer school program. And I'm happy to report that it went extremely successfully. We'll be concluding on Thursday of this week. This year, we had about 250 students at AIS. Those students range in age from three to 21. And then we had about 75 to 80 students that participated virtually with us. So we offered a blended program, but students either participated in person with a teacher exclusively teaching them in person or online, and that went very, very well. So a positive update there on the hiring front in the Special Education Department. We are finalizing the last couple of certified teaching positions. And we have almost a fully staffed department in the related services area and about two outstanding positions for special education that we're looking to fulfill quickly. We are still looking for some non-certified staff, our paraeducators. We're still looking for people in those positions. It has been quite challenging to fill those jobs, more so than in previous years. But my team and I are working on that diligently. The next thing that I wanted to update the board on is the LEAP program. Some of you may have heard about it. I've received an email or two from some of you. And what it stands for is the Learner Engagement and Attendance Program. It is a grant-funded program coming from the state. 15 school districts across Connecticut were selected to participate in this program and Danbury was one of them. We're in the process of submitting our application. We have submitted it and are waiting on hearing on the next steps. And what the purpose of this program is, is on, is supporting students on their return to school. We know that due to the disruptions due to COVID, there's many students that have participated exclusively in a distance learning format. Others that have experienced other challenges as a result of the pandemic that has prevented their engagement in school. And so this program is solely focused around re-engaging students and their families in a positive way in the educational experience. So very similar to many of the strategies that Anne formally discussed. This program will build on that. We are going to hire several additional pupil services staff members. And these staff members will actually go to students and families and work with them in their homes to help to successfully reintegrate them into school. The program will also provide training on tools, tips and strategies post-pandemic of how to reintegrate students and their families into schools. And this goes beyond just education of students. It's how to support families with various different needs, food, housing, clothing, rent, anything that they may need that could be a barrier from students regularly attending and participating in schooling. It'll also address any behavioral or mental health issues that students and families are going through, childcare needs and so forth. So in addition to hiring the pupil services staff, that will be additional new staff members. We'll post the positions in a couple of weeks and look to move forward with those sometime in mid to late September. And we will also look to provide some additional funding and resource, resources to our additional pupil services staff for those who want to beyond the school hours to support with students and families in the home. Some funding will also be available for them to do so. So we're excited about this program. I'm very glad that Danbury has the opportunity to participate. And I think it will be a much-needed resource for students and their families to help them to kind of re-engage and hopefully a more normal or typical school year this year.
Kelly, thank you so much. All right. So regarding our reopening, and this is regarding guidance from the CDC and the State Health Department. I've asked Kathy O'Dowd to join us this evening. But I also asked Cara Prunti, who I feel like also worked full-time in Danbury Public Schools as well as the city last year. And I just want to thank her again for making herself available to help us continue to educate the community about what's going on regarding the CDC and State Health Department. Kathy, can you get started and just talk to us? Number one, about some proactive measures we might, we, we are taking in a, in a community to make sure our kids can come back to school safely. And then I know we have some updates also about guidelines.
Yes. Thank you, Kevin. Good evening, everyone. Right now, our number one prevention strategy is to help people get vaccinated. And in collaboration with the State Department of Health, our local health department and Griffin Hospital, the district will be offering mobile vaccine clinics at five of our school locations starting on August 9th. These will be open to anyone 12 years of age and older who are eligible. So students, parents, families, anyone in the public will be encouraged to come and participate and get a vaccine if they've not yet been vaccinated. I've scheduled the clinics. We will do two clinics at each site. And they will be spaced 21 or so days apart so that that will allow people to come to the same location for their first and second vaccine for the Pfizer doses. We put it on the website. It's going out on social media. I'll be doing robo-calls. And I have sent it district-wide to help anyone who can promote these clinics because as of right now, especially with the, the new variant that we're seeing, the Delta variant, and I know Cara is going to speak to that and the increasing community transmission that we're seeing, we're really pushing out the vaccine effort. So that's our most important mitigation strategy right now. I've continued to meet weekly, on weekly calls with the State Department of Public Health and the State Department of Education. Last week, we were given some interim guidance regarding opening in the fall. I do not have any definitive answers as to masks. The CDC had said that unvaccinated individuals didn't have to wear masks in schools. But again, with the increasing Delta variant, I suspect that that may change. But again, the state has not offered us that final guidance yet. Our distancing remains the same, the three foot to the best extent that is possible and that we have established in our buildings. There have not been any changes to recommendations for cleaning and disinfecting other than the, the same things that we were doing last year. The same applies to the ventilation. And we'll continue to, you know, enforce the good measures of hand hygiene and keep all of our mitigation strategies in place that we can safely reopen. I anticipate final guidance from them probably in about two weeks. Any questions?
Cara, I, I, I hope you're satisfied with the promotion job Kathy just did. And, and I just want to share for the board and for the community, this, the, the effort to have the mobile vaccine units truly is a collaborative effort. We, we need almost every department to actually, you know, pull this off. So I just want to thank Rich Jowbert and Kelly Truce and Kathy O'Dowd, of course, who's in the middle of all of these conversations. But oftentimes in situations like this, we also have to pull in Cara Prunti. So I just want to thank her, Rich Torres, because the advocates are also going to be involved. You know, it's, it's amazing how many departments, you know, efforts like this touch. But everyone has stepped up, you know, we're going to need the custodians to make sure the building's available for the mobile vaccine unit. Folks to, you know, possibly use the restrooms. We, we're going to need advocates to make sure things are running orderly. Kathy has helped with the organization. Cara Prunti has been at the, at the meetings with Kathy and I and Kelly and I to get this thing lifted in the first place. We connected with a gentleman, I believe from Hartford, who made us aware of this opportunity. And it, it apparently the mobile vaccine units, there was some availability this summer prior to the start of school. Many of those mobile clinics, my understanding is, were, they, they, they were already reserved for the fall. But we had an opportunity in August and with the second date likely coming late August or in the fall. But we were happy to jump on this, quite frankly, great opportunity for, for our community. And so we'll do everything we can to continue to promote it and get, and get those students who are eligible to try to get vaccinated. Cara, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add.
Sure, thanks.
If not, that's okay too.
No, I'll, I'll just chime in and kind of echo what you guys have been saying. The number one prevention strategy right now is, and the focus is getting people vaccinated. And just to keep in mind that it does take five weeks for it to be fully effective. So if you're vaccinated today or if a child gets vaccinated today, it'll be five weeks before a person is considered fully vaccinated because it's a two-shot series and it's two weeks after the second shot. So just to keep that in timelines for people considering it going for back to school, it is, it is a five, five-week timeframe for that. So that is the number one prevention strategy. I just wanted to touch a little bit on community transmission. And there's been a lot of discussion about masks. And DPH did put out a statement this week basically saying that our, the CDC level of transmission has reached the substantial level in Fairfield County and many of the counties, most of the counties in Connecticut. So right now, the recommendation would be for mask-wearing indoors when vaccinated or not. So right now that is, and that's not just for schools, that's in all locations. That's a strong recommendation. But we are still currently under Executive Order 12A, which makes it a recommendation. So we did have, we do have an increasing transmission. Our numbers are still not escalating as high, which is great news. There's a slight difference. I just wanted to find, because people ask this a lot, what substantial transmission is, what that means in community transmission. And that is 50 cases per 100,000 over seven days. The CDC uses a seven-day period and DPH uses a 14-day period. So there is a little bit of, of difference in that. In Danbury, our 14-day range is just about three per 100,000. So we're still at a relatively low community transmission rate, which is, which is good. But I just wanted to, just to put that out there because the rest of Fairfield County is seeing drastic increases in, in community transmission. Also, just to give you an update about where we are in our vaccination rates. Citywide, we're at 57% fully vaccinated, 63% has had one dose. When it comes to our younger populations, about 47% of the 12 to 18-year-olds are vaccinated. And about 55% of 16 to 44-year-olds. I know it's a wide age range, but that's how they break it down for us. So we still have some work to do in getting more people vaccinated, which is, you know, again, the best prevention mechanism. So that's just my quick update and happy to answer any questions.
Cara, thank, thank you for that update. Kathy, Kelly, School-Based Health Center, what, can you just share what, what their role is in opportunity for vaccinations for our kids district-wide who are eligible?
Sure. So they continue to offer the vaccines throughout the summer. The high school clinic has been open and she's been scheduling vaccines for all eligible children. So if they are not current, currently enrolled in the School-Based Health Center, So if they are not current, currently enrolled in the School Based Health Center, they can do that upon the day that they come to receive the vaccine. But they have a list of students that they've been contacting for appointments and it's been ongoing all summer. And they'll continue to do that through the fall as well.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you. And so I, I just want to reiterate before we move on to facilities and operations with Mr. Jobert. One, Kara, thank you. Kathy, thank you both for your time, effort, leadership in this, in this regard. So that's one. Two, I, I just want to make it clear to the board and then also to the community. The district is not in a position to make any decision, decisions regarding masks. And what exactly the reopening is going to look like. What I can reassure the community is our buildings will be reopening in the fall. Right? And so we will be fully reopening. All of our kids will be coming back. Exactly what that looks like, we are not sure yet. You know, if, if you would have asked us three weeks ago, that, you know, there, there could have been even more discussion about this. And, you know, every week, the guidance continues to change. And so from the beginning, you know, we were, we were hoping to have a reopening committee as close to the beginning of school as possible, anticipating this kind of change. And, you know, knowing that this information is so fluid. And so we, we, we have asked Chairperson Cooper for a board meeting on, on August 25th. The reopening committee will meet the week of the 16th. We actually have a hold on the calendar for two days. In the event we need both days. We will have representatives from various labor units, representatives from the, the Danbury Hospital. Of course, the city of Danbury, which include the police chief, Kara Prunty. The emergency response team. So we feel like as a district, we're going to be well, well represented. We have a reopening plan that we're going to modify a little bit based on feedback from that group. But I, I, I feel like our town hall meeting next week with the families in the community is also an opportunity to help it re-inform the reopening plan. So we, we will be looking to meet with families next week and get feedback from them. So we can, you know, get, so, so we can learn what's important to our families who are looking to return in the fall. And, you know, we'll, we'll make sure that is also on the table for our reopening committee to help inform what the final plan looks like. So if, and I, and I'm sure there may be questions at the end, I certainly can understand that. But if it's okay, Ms. Cooper, did you have a question before I went on?
Uh, no.
Okay. So if we can go on to the next one, that's facilities and operations. I, I, I think I gave the board and the community kind of a broad overview of some of the projects that are going on district-wide. But I've asked Mr. Jobert to join us this evening and speak a little bit more specifically about some of those projects.
Thank you, Kevin. Good, good evening, everyone.
You're not in traffic anymore, Mr. Jobert. That's good.
Thank God. I just wanted to start off to fill everybody in on some ADA upgrades that I'm working on at Hayestown. We have a wheelchair-bound student that last year, because we have no elevator. We had to have staff members take this student down in a wheelchair in this sidewalk to get from the upper part of the building to the lower. And the city was nice enough to do some patching of the sidewalk. But looking at it in an ADA sense, it's, it's pitch is way too high. I've met with an architect a few times and he's coming up with a plan to redesign that sidewalk. So it will be no more than a 5% slope. We would put handrails if necessary. So he should be finishing up that plan within the next week. I've been working with Tom Hughes, the construction superintendent. He has some companies on city bid that can do that paving. And we're expecting to be able to do that before the beginning, the beginning of the school year. I broke it into a three-phase plan because really we do need an elevator for that school. It's great to have ADA accessible sidewalk. But you're still talking about bringing somebody out in the middle of winter to get them from one floor to the next. The, that would be phase two, would be a plan for an elevator and we've already started looking into that. And then finally, phase three would be to be able to get a student from the lower level to the lower playground. And the, the pitch there is, you know, there's no sidewalk going down there and the pitch is pretty steep. So we would have to design a sidewalk for that. So, so that's in progress. Update on the Ellsworth Annex. If anybody's driven by, they're, they're making great progress. Basically, they're taking the HVAC, the electrical, the plumbing and the sprinklers from Ellsworth. And they're connecting it to what used to be Osborne Street. That's the main reason we couldn't use Ellsworth for summer school this year. In addition, they've already done the abatement. That's been cleared. And they've pretty much gutted the, the whole inside of what was Osborne Street. I'm expecting that they'll have Ellsworth closed off by August, August 12th. So there will not be any issue with construction in a student area. And as of right now, they're still on, they're, I would say on target or ahead of schedule to turn the building over to us in next August. We've had to take a few, a few of the schools where, where, where there was tight classrooms. We had to take a few of the cabinets out. There is four rooms at Stadly Rough that we took four cabinets and countertops off. So we could adhere to that three-foot rule and spread the desks out. There is one or two rooms that there, we're going to be doing that at Park Avenue as well. King Street Intermediate, we were, we're separating. We're putting a partition wall between the media center and a classroom to give two distinct spaces. And we're also making a quarantine room, building a quarantine room in the current nurse's office, which will free up space to have an additional office space. Danbury Primary Center. We've ordered approximately $60,000, $65,000 worth of furniture. We have 240 desks on order, as well as a desk and a bookcase for each teacher. We have just under $200,000 renovation happening in the basement of, of the field, the Danbury Primary Center. We have 11 classrooms, but with the need for extra room for ESL. Sped art and music, we needed, we needed three additional classrooms. Need to do that renovation. Also, they're putting new flooring in. We're installing a burglar alarm. And we expect all that to be ready for the start of school. And oh, furniture. So we have about 3,000 desks and some chairs ordered for the entire school district. We've received the desks already for AAS Magnet School, King Street Intermediate and Park Avenue School. King Street Primary, Rogers Park and Shelter Rock. I just received notification though they're on order. Or they're, they're ready to be shipped. So we should be receiving those in a week. And it's sort of nice that the company we've been working with, Verco, they've been spacing it out, which gives us adequate time to put all these desks together. I expect all of that to be completed before the start of school. Any, have, anybody have any questions or?
Rich, thank, thank you so much for the update. I, I just wanted to start with Hayestown. As part of phase one of the project, are you anticipating phase one to disrupt the beginning of school in any way in terms of the sidewalks being disrupted? And some of the, the kids may have to, you know, enter, enter and exit the school in a different fashion.
From speaking to Tom Hughes, the construction superintendent, he's pretty confident that they'll be able to get that job done before the start of school.
That would be amazing. That could happen. That would be great. That would be great. And then, and then Rich, can, can you also speak to, you know, a lot of our families, particularly at Ellsworth. Are, are not all of them, but a lot of them, you know, they enter Ellsworth from the Osborne side. The Osborne entrance to get to access the building. Are, are there any adjustments coming our way regarding access to Ellsworth?
We're going to actually meet with Tom Hughes, the construction superintendent, Marnie, the principal. Just to go over any changes that we might need in, you know, dropping students off. The, the Osborne Street parking lot is going to be fenced in. So they, nobody will be able to get through that way. So we're going to have to educate the, the parents as far as dropping them off on the Ellsworth side of the school.
Okay. Thank you, Rich. Thank you so much. I really appreciate the update.
You're welcome.
I, I, I also wanted to share with the board. At the same time, while we are pulling 11 sections out of our three elementary schools, Stadly Rough, Ellsworth Avenue School and South Street, South Street School. We're also continuing to monitor our kindergarten numbers and then of course, just numbers district-wide. And so we, we have not experienced anything unreasonable in terms of registration to date. However, King Street Primary has already maximized all of their kindergarten seats. So we have reached our capacity of 88 at King Street Primary. And so registration at KSP is closed. And so all of our new, or any other, any new families from here on out, we will be, we, we will be reevaluating what schools they'll be going to in a case-by-case basis. But, but I just wanted to announce to the board, we anticipate this happening soon. So we, we received the, we, we filled our last seat last Friday at, at King Street Primary. We have some other schools, we have some high numbers, but they have the sections to accommodate them. And so across the, the rest of the district, we're actually in pretty good shape so far. MRP, however, is next in terms, as, as a next school, we need to be watching because their numbers are creeping up. But ju- just to give, just wanted to provide that update also for the board, just for registration, particularly as it relates to our kindergarten registrations and elementary registration, registrations. So, Ms. Cooper, I just wanted to share some of our collective next steps as a district. And I mentioned some of these things earlier. We'll be looking to have a town hall meeting the week of eight, nine. I believe Dr. Mead said that was on August 11th and August 12th. We would have two evenings for our families next week. We will have our reopening committee meeting starting on Monday, on the 16th. And then if necessary, a second meeting on the 17th. That meeting is, that committee is made up of various members from the community. As, as, as well as some parents on that group as well. And last but not least, once we have that reopening plan completed, we'll be sharing that with the board and asking for approval on August 25th. And that, that concludes our presentation, Ms. Cooper, regarding the reopening.
Or members having a question?
I have a question.
Yes.
Just about the community listening forums, how will parents, you know, either submit questions or participate in that? Will it be like a, a public hearing where we're, we're just listening to them? Or will there be some discourse? Just, just wondering how that will be handled. I, I know that parents are desperate for a platform to be heard right now, as much as they are for information about the upcoming school year.
Sure, Rachel. So we've, you know, we, we've had enough meetings regarding the reopening before. Unfortunately, we've had some meetings about the reopening and we're not able to reopen. So those meetings, quite frankly, were more challenging, I think, than the ones that we're, we'll be having next week. I, I am anticipating we will have a, 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 a town hall platform in which there'll be two-way dialogue. We, we certainly did this during the reopening in the spring meetings that we had, and then also the ESSER meetings that we had. And I don't see why we wouldn't be able to do it again. However, I will say with our reopening meetings last year, there were so many families on the call that we really were not able to have a two-way dialogue. Instead, we asked for representatives to ask questions on behalf of families. Not knowing what the what the turnout will look like, I will just say, right, I'll just commit right now to some type of two-way dialogue. But not sure if we'll be able to take, you know, questions from every single parent until we have a better handle on how many families will join. I, I also wanted to share, Dr. Mead is working on an FAQ sheet for our community leading up to the event. So we can get a lot of these questions recorded on a paper. And the team and I can begin to answer them so that they can be available for everyone going into the meeting. And then also post-meeting as well. So that's something we're also working on. So families can start, you know, i- in a space where they feel like they can be heard in case they can't be heard one-on-one on one in that live meeting, or they can't attend the meeting. So we'll be working on that as well.
Thank you.
I, I have a question on that. I'm sure. Um, Karen, I, is it safe to assume in light of the fact that Kathy and Kara were both presenting tonight, I'm assuming? Were, will we be likely be receiving some kind of consultation? Are we in consultation or contact with doctors, Fong and Beg, our medical advisors? I'm assuming they're involved in this process too.
Yes, yes, Joe. And so I'm smiling because Dr. Fong, my hero during COVID, emailed me over the weekend, some latest updates regarding some articles regarding from the CDC. And just some local, local guidance we needed to be aware of. So Dr. Fong, Dr. Beg will be at the reopening meeting. And, and Dr. Fong and Dr. Beg have continued to make themselves available for us as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Joe.
On behalf of the board, Mr. Washington, this is completely his presentation. And everything that he would like to bring forth to us. I would just like to thank board members for participating tonight. And I'd like to thank all of our nursing staff and Kara Prunty from the city and everyone that put part in the meeting tonight. And, uh, you know, sometimes things might not come exactly to where you want it as far as a notice. But when we're trying to schedule certain appointments, it takes time and it's not done by the finger. So I just want to thank everyone for participating tonight. And I hope we continue to enjoy the beautiful weather that we have had the last couple of days. There's no other question. I entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Joe DeSilva made a motion.
Made by Mr. Silva. Good night to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Made a motion to adjourn.